Okay, we're back and we will now go to committee the whole. We have six items. But before I do that, we'll have Monet call the role again.
Okay, Lisa Anderson.
Here.
Dan Hamel.
Still here.
Holly Huffman. Jean Knudsen.
I'm still here too.
Michael Holloquist.
I am also here.
Hannah Stone.
Here.
And Pinky Vargas.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Monet. The first item is an ordinance authorizing issuance of water and sewer refunding and revenue bonds. Is that Andy? Or who?
Yes, it is.
Go ahead, Andy.
All right, thank you, council. So yes, before you is a proposed ordinance authorizing the issuance of bonds to refinance or refund a number number of our existing water and sewer revenue bonds. Municipal barn rates are near record lows, providing an excellent opportunity to realize significant savings on our city's existing debt. Depending on market conditions of this at the time of the sale, which we anticipate to be mid-August, the city would refinance some or all of the existing revenue bonds that are outlined in your packet on page forty-six, which includes the 2011, 2012, 2013, and 2015 revenue bonds. The refunding is expected to save the water and sewer funds on average of about five hundred to six hundred thousand annually with total net present value savings of over ten million dollars. So with the current rates available, there's there's significant availability to save a lot of money associated with these these revenue bonds. So the bond ordinance was prepared by Pacifica Law Group. With me today is Deanna Gregory, sorry, attorney with Pacifica Law Group. Also with us is our municipal advisor, Justin Monway, senior vice president with Piper Sandler. So we're available if you have any questions. We just need the approval of this ordinance to be able to move forward with refinancing or refining the bond.
Councilmember Holloquist, then Vargas.
Thank you, Jean. So Andy, usually there's like some upfront financing costs. I assume that those are relatively small for still getting ten million dollars in savings, but what are they?
For upfront costs, I believe we're going to see, Justin, you're out there on this one?
Yep, I'm here. Good afternoon. So we're looking at, I'm estimating about four, at least four, between four hundred to five hundred thousand dollars in cost of issuance. I like to be conservative with my estimate, but taking those cost of issuance into account, that does still generate about ten million dollars in net present value savings.
Councilmember Vargas?
I'm going to move to approve because if we can refinance, this is absolutely the time to do it. Buy low, as they say, and so I appreciate that we are looking at ways to maximize our our funds. So move to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Vargas, second by Councilmember Hamel, and a question from Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you. I too missed my paper packet because I had a electronic version I had highlighted where I wanted to ask specific questions. And when I sent it to me, those highlights didn't come with it. So forgive me for not citing the exact paragraph, but I had a question regarding, there was a section where that savings could go into a, I'm going to get the wrong term here, but I want to say contingency account or an additional account that would be able to be utilized for future bonds, and ten million is quite a bit to be moving over into that type of fund. Was there any consideration into lowering some of the costs to the consumer since we're saving a significant amount?
I'm not sure exactly which which area you're you're pointing to. The ten million would be the the net present value savings on on the annual debt payments over time. The reserve account, which you might be speaking to, we currently have about four point eight million in a reserve account that needs to be held based on the the bond covenants. We need to have a reserve account to ensure that we can make our bond payments. With the refinancing, we're hoping to not need, it depends on on what we go through, but there might be a chance at the end of this that we would not have to maintain a reserve account. I don't know, Justin, if you wanted to add anything to that?
Right, if all the bonds are retired, the water sewer bonds, which include the 2011, 2012, 2013, and 2015 bonds, if those are all retired, then right now, what we're looking at is retiring just the bonds that are callable. And there are certain bonds that are non-callable because each each bond issue has a has a call date. Usually it's ten, ten years after issuance. So if, but if we can refund the non-callable bonds too, and if if all the bonds are retired, then there is the opportunity to release the reserve, the the funds in the reserve account, which Andy says is about four point eight million dollars. And Deanna, I don't know if you want to add anything there, but that can be used to pay down on debt service or other related projects.
Right, we would, depending on the source, the source of those funds, we would typically use the monies in the reserve fund to refund the bonds, the outstanding bonds themselves. So at the end of the day, you're borrowing less. We'll need to look at the numbers to see what's the best from a legal perspective as well as strategic. But the best use of those monies will be, but we typically would apply reserve fund money. Those are monies are usually funded by bond proceeds themselves, and so we usually contribute those to the refunding escrow.
Councilmember Hamel.
Thank you, President. What is the timeline for the realization of the ten million dollars? Do you have a sense of that?
So it'd be over time, it would be, the annual savings could potentially be the five hundred thousand or six hundred thousand, depending on the rates at the time. The pricing will not occur until approximately mid-August, and that's when we'll have the best picture of of what the terms of the of the refinance will be.
Okay, is there any other further questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All those, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Justin. Thank you, Deanna. Where are you guys joining us from?
I am joining you from my house in Renton. Yeah, Renton and Newcastle border, just right up, if you know the exit where the Sea Ox facility is, that's where I'm at.
Oh, now I know.
Yeah, that's the easy way to pinpoint it. I am joining you from my house in Smaquamee, so about four miles up from the falls.
Okay, well, thank you both for coming.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thanks for having us.
Yes, we will now go to the next item, which is an ordinance amending the 2019-2020 biennial budget, increasing appropriation estimated revenues in the general fund for COVID-19 recovery. Go ahead, Andy.
Yeah, so this ordinance, as presented, increases the estimated revenues and expenses within the general fund. We are outlining these to be within non-departmental as the the memo attached has outlined. This would include approximately five hundred thousand towards business-related grants, another two hundred thousand for childcare-related grants, and another two hundred thousand towards food security. So I know Tara Sundin was able to provide you all with a kind of a status update, brief summary on where those are at the time. But we're looking to appropriate these funds into the non-departmental so we can track them separately. And we're looking to approve the ordinance, your actions today.
Thank you, Andy. Questions?
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Councilmember Hamel, second by Councilmember Anderson. Any discussion? Councilmember Anderson.
No, I just wanted to, not necessarily questions, but I'm really glad that we're utilizing part of the funding we're getting from the federal government to help our businesses and childcare. So I just wanted to thank the committee for doing, I think, a really good job putting this together.
Okay, Councilmember Vargas?
Yeah, there's one thing on there. I am absolutely supportive of all the distribution, where it's going. I think we've done some great, some really diligent use of our funds and collaboration with the county. There's only one thing on there, I'm still going to prove it, but I I let the businesses services team know that I have an issue with the dates of the contracts for the small businesses. Currently, the dates you'll notice say that we are going to release the application on July seventeenth, and then it has to be returned on July twenty-sixth. What I said is that these applicants deserve at least ten days. I think if we can, because currently, as it stands right now, we're only giving the businesses five business days. Four of the dates on there are weekends, and the application is due on a Sunday. That is not fair to our small businesses. So I did reach out to Tara and let her know that we would like that adjusted, that we want this to be as easy for our businesses to apply and give them as much time as possible. It took us two months to get to this process, so I want to give them more than five days to fill out this application. But I am going to approve it, it's just that I do want this changed in the contract.
Okay, thank you. Is there any further discussion? Dan, Mr. Hamel.
Thank you, sir. I share Councilmember Vargas's concerns on the on the tight timeline. These businesses are, they're they're hurting, and the fifteen thousand dollars can go a long ways towards buying tables and extending these restaurants and these retailers out onto the sidewalks, and in some cases maybe into the protected right of ways. So I'm absolutely for it, but I do share the same concerns. I want to just echo my my support for our downtown businesses. I will be voting to approve.
Okay, anything else? Seeing none, all those in favor will say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. The next item is consideration of Bellingham Housing Authority's request to waive all associated fees, costs, and compensation for street vacation petition. And there is Mr. Steve Sundin. Where are you at, my friend?
Good afternoon, council members. I'm coming to you from the zone, which is our public, which is our meeting space inside the planning department here at City Hall. Okay, so thanks. Real brief here, the Bellingham Housing Authority, if you haven't noticed, already they are under construction on phase one. It's a great project, it's about seventy units. Phase two is in the planning and design stages, and I'm just going to show you the portion of Pasco that's up for discussion here. And you can see Pasco there, it's the little brick area section, and they are contemplating using some of this area for their phase-two development. It could take a variety of, could end up in a variety of scenarios, could be stormwater treatment, it could be a plaza entry, any of those things. The street vacation process, which is well-established in state law, is the mechanism to pursue outright ownership of that vacation area, or this portion of Pasco here with my cursor. The housing authority has come to us and they have asked if, under the RCW thirty-five eighty-three, which I provided in your packet, that can be utilized to allow the city to waive certain fees that are associated with the street vacation process. I've outlined those in the memo. The application fee, the fee for the hearing examiner, the payment for the right of way is adequate compensation, and then the appraisal, then it would essentially establish what that fair market value is. I sort of, as you can see in the memo, I've sort of guesstimated it what that would be. But under this RCW, they've come to us, they've requested that we waive these fees in order to facilitate phase-two of their development. After review of that request, we feel like this is consistent with the powers that are granted to a state body to enable housing authority projects.
Okay.
So we recommend that 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 goes forward without any of the fees shown in the memo.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Councilmember Holloquist?
I would move that we provide direction to waive all fees and to transfer property without any required payment as provided under state law.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Holloquist, second by Councilmember Hamel. Councilmember Anderson?
As someone who's worked quite a bit on this section of Bellingham, I cannot say how much support there is from the neighborhoods to support this project. So I'm really glad to see that the city is supporting the vacation of this property so that they could use what would typically be the funds they'd have to expend towards the project itself. So I think they're doing a fantastic job helping revitalize this part of Bellingham. So anything we can do to assist, I fully support. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
That's great. Thank you.
Okay, seeing none, all of the favor of the motion will, no, wait a minute. The motion was made by Councilmember Holloquist, second by Councilmember Anderson. Any further discussion, seeing none? All of the favor will say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Now, this next item will just whiz right through this in about five seconds, so this one will take long. The fourth and almost final item is resolution providing for ballot proposition to be submitted to the voters to continue the existing two-tenths of one percent sales and use tax to fund certain transportation improvements. Who is that, Eric?
That would be me. Thank you, Mr. Knudsen, members of the council. Joining us today are a couple of folks, notably Pete Stark from Wacom Transit Authority, or WTA. We're glad to have Mr. Stark with us today to talk about our our partnership that the city has with WTA that has been in place for a long time and is closely tied to the Transportation Benefit District, heretofore known as the Bellingham Transportation Fund. So just a little bit of history, if I might, before we get into the presentation, and we have about an hour's worth of of information to go through. I'll do a few remarks here. Mr. Stark will give a few comments, and then we'll turn it over to Chris Como to talk about some technical information, and then to Riley Grant from our communications team about a new format webpage for the community to look at related to the success we've been seeing with the current point-two percent sales tax. So just a, just a very quick overview. In the early two thousands, the Washington State Legislature established the authority for cities and counties to create transportation benefit districts, and to use it doing with two mechanisms, either by a vehicle license plate tab charge or by a sales tax. Some cities went opposite directions. Some use the licensing tabs, some use the sales tax. Sales taxes must be approved by the voters. The car license tabs could be approved by council, and some some conditions did have to be approved by voters. And with November's election last fall, those license tab have come into some question. The sales tax are still valid, and they they run for a period of ten years. The Bellingham voters approved the first transportation benefit district in 2010. It expires at the end of 2020, and we will, hence the conversation, should the city consider renewing that or continuing that point-two percent sales tax? Over the last ten years, these, this fund, these, the sales tax base has funded numerous projects for many segments of our transportation community. Notably, pedestrians and bicycles have been probably the most visible, but it has also funded paving of our arterial streets, which is critical to supporting our freight infrastructure, our multi-modal infrastructure, our industry, the port, many of our major roadways, which also has an element for safety, to supporting our buses, as well as just commerce in general, as well as our public safety operators. It's a lot easier to be riding in the back of an ambulance on a smooth street than a bumpy street. One thing to note in history of the transportation benefit district funds is that they initially created, they were focused on partnerships, partnerships between cities and counties and and transportation entities. And Bellingham and Wacom County and WTA have really taken that to heart with this fund. So nearly all of our projects have some combination, they're not uniquely focused on one element. All of the paving projects will affect at some point a bus stop. The bicycle and pedestrian projects help connect people to to bus stops and to other facilities throughout the city. Bellingham is a magnet for people coming throughout the county, and so to that extent, we are combining and working closely with those other entities. Also, we are very closely tied to the Bellingham School District, often referred to as safe routes to schools. We refer to them as designated walking routes, but the goal is the same, to get kids to school safely, to give kids to school safely in a way that they don't have to take a car or a bus, that they can walk or ride their bikes to school in a way that is, gets them to school without being, risk of any hit by a car. So we're pretty excited to report on the successes we've seen with this for the last ten years. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Stark, and then when Pete's done, we'll go over to Chris Como and then Riley Grant.
Well, thank you, Chairman Knudsen, members of the council. First of all, I want to thank you for your past support through the prior transportation benefit district, which is expiring. I want to take this opportunity today to highlight the relationship between the city and the WTA. It's the most current form of a relationship that goes back to eighteen ninety-two and the streetcar system and the cities of Fairhaven, Seehome, and New Wacom. So it's safe to say this relationship's older than any of us. Bellingham remains a transit and walkable town because it was laid out on a streetcar grid many, many years ago. And I would like you guys to reflect on that as you consider your actions today going forward. So our task today is to frame that relationship over the, over the next coming ten years, and this is a great time to tee that off. WTA has become a regional transit provider, but Bellingham is the geographic, social, economic, and political hub of our network. And Chris Como will show a couple of slides in a few minutes that highlight just why that is so. We've, we've really, in the past twenty years, had three key milestones in our relationship. The first one was our creation of our high-frequency service, our go-lines, at fifteen-minute intervals around the city of Bellingham, and that's tied with many of the city's planning concepts, in particular, the urban village concept. The go-lines and the urban villages are planned together. The next milestone was when the TBD was created in 2009. And WT's key issue in 2009 was the recession, two, where there were two, was the recession and the fact that our bus fleet had all worn out, had reached the end of life at the same time, and the entire fleet had reached the end of life. We were forced to cut Sunday service because of the recession. The TBD allowed us to restore that. And on the backside, the federal stimulus programs coming in the Obama era allowed us to replace our bus fleet. So that really helped us surmount that challenge. So 2020 again finds us at a new place in in defining our relationship. Of course, the the health crisis, the COVID crisis is one element. We're not in immediate financial peril because of that, because of our federal transit administration need. But we do have a new set set of issues. As we look at our service, issues in the right of way are important, issues of travel time, issues of access to our bus stops, and also issues of climate change are leading our concerns. And as general managers, I took a look at our most successful transit peers, and I would include Snohomish County, Olympia, and Vancouver and Spokane in that list. They've all put together a long-range transit plan that defines their relationship to their communities over a long period of time. WT has launched that plan, and you'll see that plan referenced in the items that Eric and Chris are going to present in a few minutes. We call that Plan Wacom 2040. It's in the kickoff phase, and it will define how we develop over time, which internal help inform elements of the transportation levy over the next ten years. Specific examples, I'll give a couple of specific examples. We have over a thousand stops within our system. About half of those are not completely accessible, many of them the city of Bellingham. That means either we can't safely deboard a wheelchair there, or you may get off the bus and step down on gravel, like you do on Boulevard, on the on the bayside of Boulevard. There's no sidewalks. I take that that right is about a sixteen-inch step down downhill and away from the street into a mud puddle. There's situations like that all all through Bellingham. If you can't walk safely to the bus stop, you really can't take the bus. In the past four years, we've added quite a bit of service, but one-third of that, of those service hours has gone to maintain our schedule on our go-lines because of traffic delay. To address that, we're going to need to do things in the right of way, we're going to need to do things with signal, traffic signal prioritization, to partner with the city to get the network to work better. I want to give a couple other examples of how we've succeeded in the past. Of course, realignment along Alabama has been one. The 2021 tip on cities' plans that got rebuilding a telegraph, those are both high-frequency bus routes. Over in West Maplewood, we worked together to bring a better transportation equity to a low-income neighborhood. It's not one of our high-frequency routes, but it's one where there's very poor accessibility to our stocks. On the electrification front, we have enough money in our federal grant program to replace our diesel buses, but we don't have enough to electrify. On a parallel track, the House has just passed HR two, which is their infrastructure and renewal of the of the Federal Transit Act, the six-year renewal. And that's got significant incentives in it for communities that commit to electrification. For the first time, they're recognizing the need to reinforce large fleet buys instead of onesies, twosies. And so Transportation Fund could give an opportunity for partnership there. An application that had the city of Bellingham and both the WT as a providing match would be much stronger than going along. Well, in summary, the proposal offers many opportunities to renew our relationship and refresh it and to commit to move forward together. And we're in strong support of the proposal staff's going to put in front of you. So Eric and Chairman Knudsen, thank you.
Thank you, Pete.
Thank you. We're going to now turn it over to Chris Como, our transportation planner. He'll give a presentation that he, he gave, most of this presentation was given to the Washington State Transportation Commission a couple of weeks ago. Mrs. Stone mentioned this in her comments a couple of weeks ago as well, so we'll turn it over to Chris Como now.
Chris, before you start, I got to ask you a question. That background picture of you when you're not on the screen, that looks like little Christopher Como. How many years ago was that picture?
That's just last summer.
You gotta be kidding me. You look about fifteen years old.
I wish, I wish I felt that way, Jean. Thanks.
Okay.
Young at heart, I suppose.
There you go.
So can everybody see my screen?
Yep.
Okay, great. So you see the title slide?
Yep.
Okay, here we go. So as Eric mentioned, you, many of you have seen much of this before, so this will be a lot of review, but we have multiple audiences we're speaking to. And this is the slide that Pete was just referring to in terms of Bellingham being the regional center. And of course, you've all seen this before because this is straight out of our 2016 comprehensive plan. In Bellingham, we receive a disproportionate number of vehicle trips coming in and out of our city, and this is actually really key to our economy because visitors coming in and out of Bellingham help generate sales tax revenue, which supplies a lot of funding for us on a lot of different levels, and and the same is true for WTA. We also have visitors from the north, not right at the moment. We certainly hope that's going to change soon because that's that's a big negative impact. Our visitors from the north make up almost twenty percent of our daily vehicle trips coming in and out of the city. So this is super important, and and we really rely on this. And Bellingham has a very, very long tradition of supporting active transportation. And as Eric and Pete have both been talking about, much of what we've been doing in the last ten years is completely supportive of this, and of course, all of our goals and policies and plans support this going forward. This is kind of the foundation of what we're talking about with our planning and how we go about funding projects. We're certainly most interested in trying to protect the vulnerable users on our network, but we are also trying to make sure that our transportation system works for all modes and all users because, as Eric mentioned, when we go resurface streets, that's supporting emergency service responders, it's supporting freight needs. We have to make sure we have a transportation system that serves all those vehicles coming in and out of our city. So resurfacing our arterial streets is equally as important as providing the types of facilities for other users, such as walkers and bikers. And our our projects really do reflect that. When you see what Riley's going to present in a little while, I think that will become quite evident. Here's the plans that we have created, again, with the Transportation Fund, the former TBD, that actually gave us the opportunity and the funding to create mode-specific plans, the pedestrian master plan and the bicycle master plan. We've also been very fortunate enough here in Bellingham to have an extensive citywide trail system. It's about eighty miles long, and the property tax levy that supports that has been renewed four different times. But this is kind of a secondary portion of our transportation system, and it's it's less direct, but it's much more comfortable for a lot of people to move around. We take the time to report to the public and to you how we're doing each year, an annual progress report with our transportation report on annual mobility. And this is just showing the pedestrian and bicycle network, bike concurrency service area throughout the city as it progresses over time. This is from this year. And of course, what And of course, what, what has allowed us to get to this point with all of the bicycle and pedestrian and arterial resurfacing projects is this dedicated funding source that we have. Currently, we're calling it the Transportation Fund. As Eric mentioned, it was originally passed as the Transportation Benefit District. And while it's only two-tenths of one percent, which is not a lot on the initial purchase, it adds up to a lot of money, and it generates over five million dollars in revenue for us each year. And as Eric has already mentioned, we use it for the, the two main things, resurfacing and non-motorized projects. But originally, we also contracted with WTA to buy back some of the Sunday service that was lost, as well as some supplemental service to support Bellingham's regional center and the urban villages. So as Eric and Pete have both mentioned, this is going to expire later this year. So our job is to look at the possibility of getting it renewed. And just to kind of put a fine point on how critical this funding is, I'm going to take a few moments to just explain what's going on with this graph. And many of you have seen this before, but for the benefit of all the audiences listening to this message, here you've got the, the funding on the left side of the screen. And then down below, the individual funding sources that we have dedicated to transportation funding and that you see commonly shown in the six-year tip. Just as an example, the red line here is our transportation impact fees. The purple is our street fund here. The jagged lines here are state and federal grant funding. We'll talk about that in just a second. But up top here, this is the Transportation Benefit District or Transportation Fund that we're here to talk about. You can see it's, it's the highest line here. It provides the most funding by far of any dedicated revenue source. The state and federal grant funds, while we can show here in blue that we've got quite a lot right now, it's because we've got several federally funded bridge projects in our six-year tip. But these are very volatile funding sources, and we cannot, year to year, count on any one of them. And with the passage of I-976, we've already seen two different state grant funding programs be eliminated. And now with COVID nineteen and the impacts to the state budget, we're anticipating that we will probably see not just less grant funding, but maybe some additional grant funding sources eliminated at the state level. So the Transportation Fund here is absolutely critical for us to continue to be able to make the same amount of progress that we have in the past. And of course, all of those same funding sources that we were just looking at are documented here in our six-year tip, which you just passed at the beginning of this month. And we make a big point of showing you where each flavor of funding is funding each individual project. And the, the Transportation Fund in particular, this is just highlighting the, the three buckets that we are proposing to use going forward. We've had the resurfacing and the non-motorized, and those remain. But we're adding in a climate action plan and WTA Transit Plan funding bucket. And of course, this is all in the presumption that we will be successful in seeing this Transportation Fund renewed. But we wanted to show you how important this is. You can see the numbers here going forward. And then just as a glimpse, the Transportation Fund also is influencing all of these other projects below those three funding lines. And that's because we use the Transportation Fund as matching funds to go seek grants and leverage our local funding for outside funding. And because each of these major transportation projects also has pedestrian and bicycle components, as well as freight and automobile and transit, we use this money to provide those types of facilities, in addition to our street funding, which helps flesh out each multimodal project that we do. We've been extremely successful in getting grant funding, but as we talked about, that picture may change in the next couple of years. And just as another example, and the first agenda item that you had this afternoon was talking about this very thing. This list right here is showing you what's in that twenty twenty Transportation Benefit District funding package that we talked about, all the citywide projects that Eric highlighted and a couple of others in the six-year tip. But this is, just as an example, sixteen individual projects that we're able to build this coming year because we've had that Transportation Fund available. So I mentioned that we were able to create the pedestrian master plan in two thousand twelve because we had passed this Transportation Benefit District. Took about eighteen months for us to do that. And one of the key things was to create the primary pedestrian network, which you see on the left-hand side of the screen here. The pedestrian plan has over four hundred individual sidewalk and crossing projects in it. It's very, very extensive. Sidewalks are incredibly expensive to construct because there's always new infrastructure, as opposed to bicycle infrastructure, which is on the street and already in place and sometimes just reallocating space. The sidewalk is always new. It, it includes stormwater. It includes all the engineering that goes into it. Sometimes there's environmental or right-of-way issues. But we've been very successful in, in being able to implement almost eighty individual projects over the last eight years. And this is just showing that progress. And here's the bicycle master plan. We've had much more success in implementing this plan because, as I mentioned, a lot of times when we're doing work on the streets, we can reallocate space, whether it's through a road diet or rechanalization, we're already working in between the curbs. And so anytime there's an opportunity to also provide some bicycle space, we go ahead and do that. We've implemented over half of the bicycle plan in the last six years. And on the, the left here, you see the primary bicycle network. Both of these plans have criteria in them that focused on social equity and low income and affordable housing and transit dependency. And so when we took all of the projects in each plan and ranked them and, and created a prioritized project list, the list is actually already based on where projects are going to benefit these, these populations the most. And so what this slide is showing you on the left are the neighborhoods that are considered low to moderate incomes in Bellingham. And this, on the right then, these pie charts are showing that of all of the projects that we have funded with this Transportation Fund, almost seventy percent of them are in lower to moderate income neighborhoods. And for bicycle projects, it's over seventy-five percent in these low to moderate income neighborhoods. So we've made a lot of progress there on the social equity side of things. And as I mentioned, the bicycle infrastructure has been much more successful, and, and we've achieved much more with the bicycle plan because we have more ways to get at it. Eric mentioned a few projects that we're going to be reallocating physical space on the roadway. That's going to get us additional bike facilities. You're going to see significant new bicycle lanes and mileage created this year. We've already removed eleven lanes of, of eleven miles of vehicle lanes and converted that to twelve miles of bike lanes. And when we remove parking from some arterial streets, it also allows us an opportunity. And we've added twelve and a half miles of bike lanes through that method. Now, this slide is going to visually demonstrate the extent, the extension of the network over time, as well as show how critical the Transportation Fund is compared to the other funding sources. On the left, you're going to see the difference between the bicycle and pedestrian modes. In blue, you'll see bicycle projects, and in orange, you'll see pedestrian projects. And pedestrian projects are a little bit more difficult to show on a map because they're more spot-oriented. It can be sections of sidewalk and crossing improvements. Whereas bicycle projects are much more linear and regional, and so they're easier to show on a map. What you'll see is the networks grow over time. And on the right side of the screen, you're going to see the different colors. The green is grant funding that we've secured. The red is either street fund or partnerships that we've created with other entities like the county or WTA or the Bellingham Housing Authority, or contributions by private development from a mitigation standpoint. And then in purple, you're going to see the transportation funding. And it will become quite evident how critical this is and, and how much we've been able to do with this funding over time. You can see the network growing year by year. And you can recall that map of the low and moderate income neighborhoods, and you can see how much we've been able to do over the last ten years. It's, it's actually quite remarkable. And the amount of Transportation Fund dollars on the right side is, is really, I think, a powerful message as to how critical this funding has been for us. So as we've mentioned, going forward, we have created a special line item in the six-year tip. You, you've just had those discussions, and you adopted the six-year tip on June eighth. And it's got a project number three that is meant to provide transportation funds to reduce transportation impacts on the climate. And that's for measures that are specifically identified in the Climate Protection Action Plan. And what we know right now is that we've got a few items that we can be working on, and more will come in the future, and we'll talk about that in just a moment. But key to all of this, of course, is whether the Transportation Fund can be renewed. Here's what that looks like, project number three. And it's got climate and transit. And the reason for that is we're not yet clear on exactly what these projects are going to be. The ones that we are aware of in twenty twenty-one include citywide electrical vehicle charging stations. And we've written a grant for that from the Department of Commerce. We've committed five hundred thousand dollars, the city has, and we're hoping to leverage that for either a million or a million and a half. We won't know until the end of the year, but this is the dedicated funding amount there. As Pete mentioned, the city is working with WTA on their, WTA twenty forty Long Range Transit Plan. And then they're working with us on our ongoing Lincoln Lakeway multimodal transportation study. And so we work hand in hand, and we support each other's agencies and priorities. And we'll continue to do that going forward. When we get through the transit planning process and have a better idea of what those projects might look like, they'll go into this section here in twenty twenty-two. And each year, we'll be programming new projects and new priorities for the transit side of things. The same is true with climate. You're working through some of the prioritization right now on the climate plan. And, and once we have a better idea of what those capital improvements look like from the transportation side of things, they will also be in here and programmed year to year, just like we've been doing with the non-motorized and the resurfacing projects for the last ten years. We're not yet aware what they will be, but we'll certainly be informing you of that. And of course, you will have the final say in how that money gets programmed. So wrapping things up in summary, our continued success really depends on whether we're able to have this dedicated funding source. And as we've talked about, we're very dependent on visitors from out of town coming to Bellingham, whether they're from the county, other parts of Washington, or Canada, our friends from the north. And the great thing about this fund is that everybody contributes to it through consumer goods and purchases. And everybody benefits from it. You're going to hear more about that from Riley, which she walks you through the Transportation Fund story map. The sales tax has been helping us to fund transportation improvements for all modes. We've been extremely successful growing the sidewalk network, providing lots of crossings across arterials, linking up streets and trail networks, supporting the transit system, and making sure that we also have more traffic signals and roundabouts to support automobile, transit, and freight functions. Without this dedicated funding, we're going to have a really hard time, especially given some of the things that we talked about with state budget cuts and grant funding potentially being reduced or even going away. And we'll have a difficult time continuing to implement our pedestrian and bicycle master plans. We've, we've done a lot, but there's still a lot more work to do in these plans. We've got some new plans coming. The ADA Transition Plan will be coming later this year. We've got the Climate Action Plan that we'd very much like to be implementing measures for transportation impact reduction for. And of course, we, we truly love to be supporting WTA's twenty forty Long Range Transit Plan and, and the improvements that they're going to identify there as we move forward. So having this fund in place will certainly help us with that job. And that's all I've got today, and be happy to answer questions with Eric and Pete.
Thanks, Chris.
If we can now have Riley, can we, can we go through the next presentation, please? And we'll do questions at the end if you wouldn't mind.
No problem.
So next on our list of presenters is Riley Grant. Riley might be a new face for a couple of folks, but she's in our education and outreach group. And her team, along with some of our GIS folks, have put together a new format, probably a less technical format and maybe a little more understandable for those of you not afflicted with the engineer's disease. So with that, I'll turn it over to Riley Grant for the story map portion.
All right. Well, thank you, Eric. And so I get the, you know, sort of easy task of walking you through a new resource that we have put together, this story map. And hopefully you can all see my screen that's sharing right now. Yes, okay, great. And this is a hot-off-the-press story map that we released just about a week ago. And it was really a great collaborative effort from a lot of staff to put together this resource. And really, the resource, the goal of this resource is to take all this really great technical information that a lot, some of us understand in more detail, but, and try to make it more publicly facing for a lot of community members that maybe just want some highlights, but still have the resources available for people that want to, you know, kind of take that deeper dive. So this is available on our public website. It's also, it's available in your council packet, the link to this. The link is www.cob.org/transportationfund. So it's fairly easy to get to and find. And what I would love to do today is just kind of walk you through some of the, the general layout and some of the cool features that we have in this, in the story map. And then I'm not going to, maybe I'll talk about a few highlights. But for the most part, I encourage you all, if you haven't already, to go and spend some time looking at the story map and really look at all the information that's there because it's a lot of really, really great information that's been distilled here. So if you're, if you're not familiar with the story map, which I think you've probably seen some of the other great ones that have come out from other city departments, but they're, they're really designed to, this one in particular is really designed to be scrolled through as a story, right? So it's supposed to kind of tell you stories as you go along. But there are some navigation pieces up here if you want to skip to major parts. But this one starts off with a nice overview of the Transportation Fund. And this, the idea of this overview is that it's a really big-picture snapshot for people that maybe are new to understanding what this is or just want to know. So what have we gotten out of the Transportation Fund in the last ten years? And so we have some really nice visuals that help enhance the text. So this is a little infographic that we put together that highlights just the big-picture benefits that we've received. So nine miles of improved sidewalks, forty improved crossings, fifty-two miles of on-street bicycle facilities, and forty-six miles of streets repaired and maintained. So with a little more detail there. Obviously, as you've all heard Chris talking, there's so much more to the story, but this is a really nice, big-picture snapshot. And, and we also have that really great visual that Chris would, just, you just got to see Chris talk you through this little video that shows the network chain kind of building out over time. So it's a little time lapse there. So it's great to get to provide that in the story map. And then really, you know, the purpose of this, the next few sections is to really help people understand what benefits maybe they as individuals or us as a community in general have seen as a result of the Transportation Fund. And so we can title that section Benefits for All because really, as we've talked about with this Transportation Fund, every, every person that uses a transportation network, which is almost everyone, benefits in some way. So we've broken that down into a couple of kind of primary modes of transportation. But this first map here that we have is, captures all of the Transportation Fund or partially funded projects that we've seen since two thousand and ten. So this has a nice little legend that breaks it out by mode of transportation. So many projects have multiple So many projects have multiple benefits, not just bike or ped, but maybe have some shared benefits there. So this map is really great because it's interactive as well. So if you want to know what's been happening in your neighborhood, you can actually go onto the map itself and click on any of these projects. You'll see here this project took place over multiple locations in town, but collectively was this Lake and Linkway, sorry, Lakeway-Lincoln Bike Ped Safety Project. And it just gives a brief description of what went in there. So it's a nice way for people to interact with the projects in a fairly accessible way. And then as you keep scrolling through the story map, we start to get into these different users and different modes and what kinds of benefits we've seen there. So first, for the pedestrians, the, this example here, and this is similar, it's similarly laid out for the bicyclists and the drivers as well. But you'll see a little overview and as well as some links to important documents where you can find more detailed information. And then we have these really great little thumbnail maps that you can actually click on and interact with the same way you did that first big map that highlight, these are just specifically the pedestrian projects that we've seen over the last, you know, since 2010. And as you keep scrolling, you actually get to find out a little bit more about some of the specific types of improvements that are funded through through the transportation fund. So this example has, you know, ADA improvements. I'm sorry, this, for some reason, there's an image that's not showing up. There it goes. That, so it gets into a little bit more detail here about some of the various ADA improvements that we see through all these pedestrian improvements. This is a great way for people to learn about, a little bit more about the types of crossing improvements. Why do we have, you know, these more elaborate buttons? What do these mean? How are these making crossings more accessible? And we also get to learn a little bit about sidewalks and the importance of sidewalks. And I'll mention here earlier, there was a conversation about the school district being a great partner in the designated walking routes that we work with them on. And we plan to add a section here that elaborates a little bit more on some of the improvements that we've seen specifically to schools. We just are still kind of compiling some of that data and working with the school district to get some of that, some key information. So hopefully, in the near future, we'll have one more little section here that elaborates on that piece of the funding. But I'm going to keep scrolling on. Sorry, these pictures are coming up out of order. It's a little frustrating. But this, the, this, as we move into bicyclists, as I said, we, the the layout for the webpage is very similar to what you saw in the pedestrian layout and where it has an overview with this nice-looking thumbnail of, sorry, not that, but a nice-looking thumbnail where you can zoom in on the map if you would like to have more details on what all the different bike improvements are. And then if you keep scrolling, I'm sorry, I'm going to see if I can get this to fix why the pictures aren't coming up. Sorry, just a little technical glitch. There we go. Now we're back at the right pictures. So as we're scrolling through, again, the same thing, we're learning about some of the specific types of improvements we've seen in bicyclists, you know, for bicyclists. So separated bike lanes that have these really nice vertical elements to provide an extra painted buffer and physical buffer between the cars and the cyclists, as well as some buffered bike lane improvements. And obviously, we have some pretty great pictures of these facilities in action, which is nice. This bike, the bike boxes, and there's a great little video here that already existed that is about how those work and their functionality. And a little piece here about Shane, the shared lane markings, which I think for a lot of people is also a good educational opportunity. They may not know what that is. So we added a good graphic about what those mean for both bicyclists and motorists. And here's a little testimonial that we added in there from the current Chair of the Transportation Commission. They obviously have a lot of feedback that they are able to provide on the projects that we ultimately bring forward to council. So it was great to hear, to be able to show their support for the transportation fund and the significance that it has in our community for these projects. There's Pete. Sorry, these are, it's doing the same thing where this is not the right image, but that's okay. The transit, we got to hear from both Pete and Chris and Eric about the important relationship we have with WTA. And so this section really highlights the information you've already heard on some of our, some of the ways that the transportation fund has helped to support those transportation improvements as well as Pete talking about the importance of our partnership and the importance of our future, this future planning that they are going in and how we can collaborate looking forward. And last section in here is the drivers' section. So this is, you know, as with single-occupant vehicles being our dominant mode of transportation, we really want to make sure that we get to highlight all the improvements that we've seen for that mode as well. So similar graphic here as well as a description of arterial, of our arterial resurfacing program and some of the other improvements we've had for traffic flow. And there are, I'm just hearing that maybe the pictures look okay to you and they're just coming across as different to me. Anyways, so the, ultimately, I also being able to highlight that when we do things for drivers, like arterial resurfacing, we ultimately see improvements for other modes of transportation like Chris was talking about with bicycle facilities oftentimes as well. So those sections were really a great way of highlighting everything that we've done so far and really honing in on some of the different elements. And then this section, the Smart and Strategic Improvement Section, really focuses more on how we make those decisions and why those decisions were made. So we've got some great links here to our pedestrian and bike master plan. Here's some, this graph we just saw about our funding sources and kind of how the transportation fund is this most consistent and significant source of revenue for these projects. We get to boast a little bit about some of the awards that we've won for this map, our rapid trans-implementation of the bike master plan. And I make sure that people really understand this equity, this equity piece because it's so important to know that these lower-income families, neighborhoods are seeing the majority of the benefit from this, from this tax and this funding. So the last section I'll go through real quickly is just about keeping the momentum. And that is really geared towards helping kind of put some visuals with the six-year Transportation Improvement Program. And there's a link there as well as a couple of other visuals. And this map here, talking about our, you know, arterial, oh, sorry, this is for non-motorized improvements that these, the various projects that are highlighted on here, all of our remaining projects that are in the current bike and pedestrian master plan. So it really highlights that we've made a lot of progress, but we still have, we still have ways to go to complete those networks. And in addition to that, in terms of arterial resurfacing, what this map shows is in dark blue, it shows the streets that have been resurfaced are ready with transportation fund dollars. And then the rest of the arterials, it shows their rating based on whether they're in good, fair, or poor condition. So we have a fair amount in this kind of light blue-green color, but yellow and red are, it helps to highlight that that arterial resurfacing program is still significant and important. We've still got, we still have work to do. And then lastly, just a little nod to our Climate Action Plan and the emerging projects that we'd like to see in the future there. And wrapping it up with a little conversation about what types of projects we would like to see supported in the WTA Transit Plan and the support that we hope to be able to do into the future. And that, that pretty much sums up the map, so.
Hey, thank you, Riley.
Thank you, Riley. Can I just, just to wrap things up here, just a couple of closing comments and then certainly open up for questions from the council for all of the presenters today, who I think have done a great job. And thank you to Pete and Chris and Riley for putting that together. Just want to, just to recap, this is a sales tax. And sales taxes can be controversial, certainly controversial this day and age with the economic struggles that we are all facing. Just to note that that the sales tax is charged to all users. So whether you walk or ride a bike or drive a car, all users pay. Sometimes we get criticism that how come bicyclists don't pay for infrastructure? They do. So they pay just as you and I would driving our car and likewise vice versa. Cars and bikes alike will pay for the improvements. This is a sales tax for a specific purpose. It is for transportation, cars, bikes, walkers, transit. All of those things are for a very specific and narrow purpose. As just a point of reference, in the past, the past nine or 10 years, 31% of the revenue was dedicated to paving projects. 19% of the revenue was dedicated to transit projects. And about 50% was dedicated to bicycle and pedestrian projects. So there's about a 30, 50, 20% split in past practices. Looking forward, very similar to 2010. In 2010, we did not have a pedestrian or a bicycle master plan. Moving forward in 2020, if it's renewed, we will create and add and adopt and partner with WTA on their strategic plan. And as identified in the six-year tip, we have updates and renewals to the bicycle and pedestrian plan to reassess our priorities and to refocus on those efforts. So very similar to 2010, we, the voters approved the tax in advance of the plans being developed. Number four is their accountability. There's a great deal of accountability with the six, with this, with this process. The use of these funds is reviewed by the Transportation Commission on a regular basis. The city council adopts the use and programs and allocates funds annually through the six-year tip process. That is a public process that requires by law a public hearing. So to the extent that this is accountable, maybe more so than some of the other taxes that the city has out there, is accountable to the public. We are accountable and we report, we report that annually through the six-year tip process and through the TRAM process that Chris reported, the transportation, the annual report on transportation. And lastly, just to cap all of that off, this is a fund and a series of initiatives and implementation that benefits all users. Whether you're in a freight truck, a heavy truck hauling fish down to Bellingham Cold Storage, or you're walking to the park, or you're walking to school, or you're riding the bus, this benefits all users. Even if you're just trying to get faster to where you want to go in the car, this will benefit you as a user. So that, those are kind of my summary points there. This is a great program. We would like to see this continue and we hope that the city council and the voters would see that continue. And with that, be happy to answer any questions that council might have.
Okay, Councilmember Hamels first, then Councilmember Stone.
Thank you, Council President. I I hear you, Mr. Johnson, in terms of the, everyone pays into this. But I mean, it is, at the end of the day, it's still a sales tax. That means that person on South Hill will pay the same as someone who lives in Roosevelt neighborhood. And that, you know, I definitely have issues with it, but I don't see a way forward without having this. I don't see how how we would fund the vital improvements that we have to do for our, our community. My question is, is that, given the shortfall of, we have no Canadian shoppers that are paying into this right now, do we have a sense of what this tax will, what the revenues are going to look like over the next year or two? And I realize that no one has a crystal ball or whatever, but what do we, what are we thinking on this? Is it still going to be 5 million or is it going to be 20% off of that?
Well, I, that's a great question. So having, everything being equal, and if we were in February, we would be predicting closer to 6 million. So we've already scaled back and the projections moving forward to that 5 million are based on a reduction of about 20% moving forward. Now, we have yet to, we have yet to see whether the the impacts of this economic shortfall are acute and whether they return quickly or whether they're more prolonged. And certainly the effect of the border being closed will have an impact on to us this year and see how that affects us on to next year. But I think that's a great deal of uncertainty. But regardless of whether it's 5 million or 6 million or 3 million, that it is a, is it appropriate dedicated funding source for these types of projects? Now, they, now the, recall that also the creation of the TBDs originally, there were two options through the state legislature authorized. One was a car tab, the other was a sales tax. So so within that construct of the transportation benefit district idea, we have two choices, sales tax or a transport, or a car tab. But your guess frankly is as good as mine as to what the future is going to hold when it comes to sales taxes. The receipts the last two months were pretty, pretty low, but prior to that, they were ahead of schedule. Also, recall that that the, the sales tax that we collected this year, and those receipts will come in through April of 2021. So projects we built in 2021 will be based on revenue collected in 2020. So if the, if the, if the sales tax is continued, we will use those revenues that we collect in 2021 for 2022 projects.
Okay, Councilmember Stone.
Thank you, President Knutson. So first, something simple, I hope. I wanted to make a request for direction just with respect to the Transportation Fund Story Board, which Riley, thank you so much for that presentation. And Eric and your team, I just want to thank you for taking that, that on. I think it, it does a great job just of trying to reach voters and community members, just as far as the, like you say, trying to make it more digestible for people. And so the one request would be with respect to moving forward. And I realize we can't make any promises or projections with respect to specific projects. But I would like for the city to highlight sort of an emphasis on continuity and moving forward and just the emphasis on the opportunity to renew in November. I don't know if we can highlight that, but wanting to make it very clear to the community that this is something that would be coming forward in November for possible renewal. And then some discussion about the, maybe even just the homepage, but making that available in multiple languages, or at least in Spanish and English, at least the homepage. But just wanting to at least have something that highlights what's coming forward in in November, assuming that all of this resolutions and ordinances go forward. Thank you for that.
Councilmember Lillquist.
Um, yeah, I'd like to ask about the bicycle and pedestrian plans. Those are six and eight years old respectively. I believe we currently have plans to update them already. Those would be updated sometime this year, by the beginning of next year. When are we planning on updating those? Because one of the things that was really useful is seeing that list of projects. It it made what we just saw seem realistic and achievable six and eight years ago because we had that list, we had that map going forward. So when will we have the next map? By the end of this year or maybe by early next year?
It's a good question. Those, the renewal of those two plans, and Chris will correct me if I get this wrong, were identified in the six-year tip as a 2021 project. The assumption being that if, if the, if the tax is continued in November, that we would redo those plans in 2021. If the tax is not continued, we would not take the effort to renew those plans. So it's, it's contingent upon the passage of the, of the ballot measure. We would renew and update those bicycle pedestrian plans in 2021 with new projects lists being available for adoption with the 2022 six-year tip.
Okay. Any further questions? No further questions?
I think Hannah has a couple of questions.
Go ahead, Hannah, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Thank you. So I sent out an email, and I don't know at this point, Eric, Director Johnson, if you wanted to discuss the resolution further before accepting any questions related to that.
Either way, I mean, unless there's a, well, let me put it this way. So if there's, if there are no more questions about the work we've done in the past, there has been an interest of some community members to have some specificity in the resolution. have some specificity in the resolution that's before you today. And and if so, if there's other questions on what we talked about today, maybe we could move into that resolution. I think is where you're trying to go, Miss Stone on that. So
Okay.
Take it away. Take it away.
Go ahead, Hannah.
Okay. So I want to thank Director Johnson and his team also for incorporating additional whereas clauses in the draft resolution that was presented to council in this week's packet. So thank you very much for that. I think it provides just a broader base from from where we're working. And so one of the proposals is a proposed proposed funding split and what those numbers would look like. I was thinking of, you know, forty, forty, twenty, but if currently we're looking at thirty, forty, twenty, I wouldn't be opposed to that. Obviously, in proposing a a funding split, I just want to be clear that it's not any disrespect or distrust of of the public works or the the amazing work that's been done by the city and implementing, you know, the projects and proposals that have come forward under the and been implemented through the Transportation Fund. But obviously, looking forward and thinking about the fact that administrations change, councils change, when we're talking about intent and really the the policy intent of this council with respect to use of those funds. And especially bringing forward, you know, an extended tax in the current economic climate that we're in. I feel like voters and community members deserve that, again, accountability and transparency about sort of where where those funds would be would be spent. And so that was proposal that I'd sent out late this afternoon, just to alert council members that that would be coming forward, but just wanting to at least do some due diligence as far as a policy discussion to see where other council members are at.
Councilmember Lillquist.
I fully support the proposal that that Hannah is coming forward with. We did it last time, too. We had more of a one-third, one-third, one-third split that we started out with at the beginning, and that was adjusted over time and as projects needed. I I do think the forty, forty, twenty split is probably appropriate. We have two buckets that are tried and true, and we have another bucket that's got some new elements in it. I think the language that Hannah is going to bring forward, you know, indicates that these are not absolute mathematical splits. It's a guidance that that changes a little bit project by project, year by year. But I think she's right on all of her points. It's important for future councils and future administrations to understand or intend today. It's important that the voters understand. It's important in years to come that as the voters look back at how we have spent it, we can show that we we're roughly at, you know, following the the promise that that we would be making today. So I'll be supporting Hannah's amendment to the resolution, a clarification, I would call it.
Okay, Eric.
So this is a this is a great topic and and one very worthy of discussion. If I just might briefly share my screen with the with the group here. And Matt Stamps will certainly chime in if if I get this wrong, but in in the resolution, there are three sections to the resolution. The first section is the whereas recitals, which I'll refer to as the non-binding section of the of the resolution. Then the second portion of the resolution is the binding portion of the resolution. Well, I think we say that the non-binding section is really a statement of intent. What is trying to be achieved? What's the background? How do we get to this point? Then the binding section of the resolution says, this is what we are going to do. And as part of that binding section is this language here, which is the ballot title as it will appear in the voter's pamphlet. And this this is very somewhat prescriptive. This is the language. This is the language in the resolution that was drafted by the City Attorney's Office and staff and reviewed by our bond counsel. And there are some very specific things in terms of word count. So the red text, we get to change the red text, maybe nine, ten words at most. We don't get to change anything in the black text. That comes from the county auditor. The blue text, we can have that, but it can't be more than seventy five words. So given that, and I I I would staff sees value in 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 two camps here, right? Do we do we use a general language as was proposed in the resolution? And the the is similar to the language that we use used in the two thousand ten measure, which called not a specific one-third, but that the funds would be balanced and allocated equitably between three projects. And so that term equitably balanced was interpreted to mean a one-third, one-third split. So moving forward, the question becomes for the council is, do we amend either the non-binding section in the whereas recitals or the binding section of the resolution to reflect something similar to the language that I have here on the screen? That would be an approximation split of forty percent to paving, forty percent to non-motorized, or twenty percent to climate action and transit. And those numbers, that's that's council's prerogative. You get to make those choices. The it kind of a technocratic, wonkish, you know, bureaucratic way of looking at things, if you excuse me for that for just a minute.
You're already an engineer and Eric, don't push it.
I'm going downhill rapidly today. This is so, but you know, I'm not the attorney. Matt will help me out if I need to, but if if we include this type of language as a whereas statement, then it does become in that non-binding section that declares the intent. And clearly declares that intent, and we can show that over the last ten years, we have largely followed that 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 split in as past practice. If it's included as a in the in the binding section, we would likely, if those numbers change, we would need to with the six-year tip, if if the if the six-year tip split is different than what is included in the binding section, there would likely need to be an accompanying ordinance to reflect the difference between the resolution and what the tip says. So as a as a just got a functionary thing for simplistic state is our recommendation would be to include that split as a whereas statement in the non-binding section as opposed to the binding section of the resolution. But very supportive of that idea. Very clearly, that helps communicate to a voter what they're what they're getting for their dollars. As a taxpayer, I like to see that. There there are some challenges with putting specific numbers into those types of resolutions that would need to be dealt with, but that's not a that's not a reason not to do it. So this is some language that the staff had drafted up, knowing that there was an interest to head this direction. And and certainly welcome the conversation and any changes that the council would like to make to that. Matt, do you have anything to add to that?
I would just add for a little context. So in the resolution that placed the sales and use tax on the ballot in two thousand ten, the statement about the split was included in a whereas clause, and it said the intent was to allocate them in a way that generally balances the 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 dollars equitably between the three projects. So it was in a whereas clause. It was not in the body of the resolution. If we if it were to be placed in the body of the resolution this time, I I would recommend it would just be in in the, you know, up up in section one or two. I would not recommend including it in the actual ballot language, that that paragraph you showed, that the red and the blue text. I think that would just kind of complicate matters. We're already up against word limits there as well. So that's that's all I'd have to add.
Hannah, go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, so my proposal, and it may not have broad support. That's what we're here to discuss, would be to include that in section two and have it be binding. It perhaps it's the attorney in me, but again, it gets back to our intense good. And right now, you know, we're all on the same page. And when you're thinking about something that spans over ten years, you know, my preference would be to have that binding. Otherwise, obviously, we're going forward in in good faith. And so yeah, that's the request.
You want to go ahead and make a motion?
I I can. We haven't heard from other council members, so I don't know.
We'll discuss it, but we need just get a motion on it. Four of them will go from there.
Okay. So I don't know how much of the motions required, but to add under section two, which would be page page three of the resolution, page one twenty four of our packet, to follow collectively the transportation fund projects and prior to the cost of all necessary design. So inserting that it is the intent of city council that transportation fund revenue will be allocated to the various transportation improvement projects as follows. Approximately forty percent to project one, annual street repavement pavement resurfacing program, approximately forty percent to project two, non-motorized transportation improvements, and approximately twenty percent to project three, climate action plan and Watcom Transportation Authority, WTA Transit Plan Improvements. Subject to adjustment by city council through the annual public process of adapting the city's transportation improvement program based upon funding needs, taking into account other available funding sources, project readiness and strategic priorities established by the city and WTA in their respective adopted plans. When there was expressed, so I guess that would be the the motion is to insert that. Previously, there was discussion about whether or not, you know, having it at forty percent, it says approximately, whether that provides some you know, latency on the part of the city in implementation and whether or not it would be necessary to further articulate, you know, to provide flexibility, the Public Works Department may on an annual basis make a five percent change to these percentages. If a change greater than five percent is needed, it will require require approval by the Bellingham City Council. I don't know if if that additional, you know, stipulation would be required or or not. That I would defer to the, you know, to the department about whether or not that's helpful or hindering.
Okay, do we have a second to the motion?
Second.
Okay, motion been made. Second discussion. Mr. Hamel.
Well, I appreciate the putting handrails on this for future councils and future administrations. I I go back to the the housing levy, the Bellingham Home Fund. When we when we put that together back in two thousand twelve, we had four buckets of where the where the dollars were going to go to. And we quickly realized that we were mistaken. We needed way more dollars for rental assistance than we had anticipated, and we made and adjustments were made. Everything turned out, you know, fairly okay. But I'm just I'm a little hesitant to be prescriptive on binding language as relates to percentages and just being this prescriptive. So I'm not going to support the motion.
Okay, Councilmember Lillquist.
I could go either way on this, frankly. The the language that Hannah has drafted has the words like approximately in there. I I keep my promises, whether they're in the top section or the bottom section. But Mr. Hamel makes an excellent point. We could be wrong and or five years from now, just conditions may change. I I'm strongly supportive of of us having a clear intent to express to the voters. But I I if, you know, I could go either way on this, so I will be listening. I think it's important that it is somewhere in the resolution, but it can be above or below binding or non-binding as far as I'm concerned.
Okay, Councilmember Anderson.
Councilmember Lillquist covered very similar what my thought process was. As a citizen, I've always been a little irked when future city councils do change use of tax dollars where the citizens have voted the intent. But I also realize that, you know, seven years from now, there may be a wonderful opportunity or unforeseen situation that we need to be able to address. And I would want to be able to have that flexibility to be able to make slight adjustments. I do think Hannah has covered that in the way she has it written. And if a majority of people were really feeling that, putting those strong rails on, I would definitely support it, much like Michael. I'm I'm good with it being in either location. I just am concerned that there could be a situation that much like Daniel's example with the housing. So I think it's a good idea to switch the percentages, but exactly where those are stipulated, I could go either way.
Councilmember Housman.
Man, we're all sometimes all on the same page, shockingly. I'm feeling it either way, too. I I like I like giving people a more specific explanation of where the money is going to go if they're voting on it. But at the same time, I think I think Councilmember Hamel's point is a really good one that sometimes our needs might change drastically, and especially right now, everything's changing drastically around us. So it's I think that's I think it feels a little bit too rigid to me and a little bit too forty, forty, twenty just feels a little bit too numbers pulled out of a hat, I guess. I think maybe if we had a much more clear projection of what we'll be spending this on and it a little bit more specific percentages, I might feel a little bit better about that and a little bit more leeway to to change. I might feel a little bit better about it as well. But open to more discussion, too.
Okay, any any other council members? Councilmember Stone.
Yeah, so just in response to that, I certainly appreciate and want, I mean, would want whatever was being presented to provide that opportunity for things to change in the future. But it's basically requesting that those changes be approved by council. And so that we would have an opportunity to weigh in if things were to change drastically. Furthermore, just that there will always be more projects than there are funds. I mean, that's that's the reality. And so wanting to make sure, I guess, that certain things are not lost going forward, things like climate action and transit. And further, you know, our commitment to bike and pedestrian plans, I think, has been evident in the projects that we've completed. So I just want to make that peace.
Okay, Mr. Raffado is frantically waving his hand.
Yeah, and I don't know how the vote's going to go, but one of my requests is if it does pass, I would just want someone, a councilperson, maybe Councilmember Stone, if it passes, to work with Matt. We are on a timeline. And we'll need that specific language read into the record. And then the second point is just a clarification for me to understand process, and I I don't know it as well as perhaps Matt and Eric do, but if there is some mechanism for changing the allocation through a council approval, I'm curious what that would be and would it be the tip and would it be basically what we're going to do anyway? Whenever the plan is presented to council in the tip, I'm a little bit confused on where a council would weigh in and if that would be different than the tip process.
Yeah, so Matt Sam. So the tip process would involve a public hearing and a council vote and approval by resolution. If 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 the allocation was going to change, I I think that would be the method for doing it. One could argue that you're changing the project list in some way, and therefore not just a resolution, but also an ordinance would be required. It's a little bit of a gray area when you're changing the allocation as opposed to adding a new projects and therefore expanding the list. If you were expanding the list of projects, let's say hypothetically, to add some fourth project, I know no one's talking about that. But if you were to do that, that would require in addition to the tip process, you'd have to have a public hearing and an ordinance to do that. When you're just changing the allocation, I think you're sort of in a a little bit of a gray area as to whether or not just the tip process and a resolution would suffice, or if you'd also need a public hearing and an ordinance. Fortunately, it's as 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 precise as I can be. I think that's sort of an open question as to how you do that. To be safe, I think you'd probably layer on potentially a second public hearing and a second ordinance to change the allocation.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Matt.
Oh, well, the only other thing I had while I had the floor here is the the language that Councilmember Stone read was we we sort of that sort of developed as a whereas clause. It includes a statement of councils. It's framed in the sense of council's intent as being X, which is kind of a a typical way you'd frame something in a whereas clause. If that statement is instead to be used in the body of the ordinance or resolution, rather, typically, you wouldn't see it as an intent. You'd see it as a statement that they shall be allocated that way. Not that it's council's intent to allocate it that way. So to me, that's I'd be curious to see what Peter thinks about that, but I wonder, I mean, maybe that's something we would just work out in the drafting this afternoon, but you usually wouldn't see the word intent in the body of the of the resolution.
Councilmember Lillquist.
Yeah, I would like to have legal staff maybe consider that second paragraph that Hannah is suggesting.
Hannah is suggesting. We could even specify there that council approval could be, say, by resolution, right? We could determine ahead of time and remove any uncertainty about the process by putting it in that section if indeed it does go in the binding language. If this does get approved, I think that Ms. Stone and Legal will need to maybe look at that between now and tonight. But maybe we can anticipate those problems and Mr. Stamp could find a way to kind of like head off any uncertainty now rather than wait till the future.
Is there any other discussion? Go ahead, Hannah.
I just wanted to clarify. So have we lost Councilmember Vargas?
Yes, she'll be back. She thought she might be back by three.
Okay.
Jane, can I?
Yes, sir.
Give more, two more cents worth. So history of TBDs, if I might, from from staff perspective, going back in the early 2000s, when they were first created, there was a great deal of interest to make sure that the TBDs were very narrowly and specifically identified for specific projects. And so oftentimes, you'd see as a ballot measure would go forth, not at Bellingham, but other places, individual projects with individual costs for those projects in the ballot measure itself. And as as time went on, cities, councils and and staff and the process became, they it was a greater awareness, as Mr. Hamel pointed out, the restrictions that they created, both technically and politically, for communities to try to resolve some of those issues, some of those issues. So as a project might become more or less expensive, it created a great deal of of extra effort to resolve some of those discrepancies. And so as time has progressed in the last almost 20 years now, the trend has been to be much more general and to not include those specific those specific numbers in in a binding fashion. And to and to rely on that as the as the tip process annually to adjust those numbers through that public hearing process. And I would offer that that Hannah's, Ms. Stone, as you read the the language, that that language, I don't believe we would need the additional language about the five percent. Since we would adjust that and we would present those numbers annually with the six-year tip, the direction would be to staff to to focus those numbers to split to be the split that is presented in there. The question that would remain would be, would do we need the resolution approving the six-year tip? And in addition, a separate ordinance and or a separate public hearing to revise the transportation fund project list. Remember that the transportation fund source is separate from the six-year tip. They're connected, but they're two separate actions. So the approval of the six-year tip, it deals with all funding sources related to transportation, the street fund, the transportation fund, grants, private partnerships, impact fees. Changes to the transportation fund would need to come as a separate action. So they could be done simultaneously. You could have a public hearing on the six-year tip and a public hearing on the ordinance if the numbers were were drift different than that. So it just becomes more of more process and more time, but very supportive of doing that. So if the if it was included in the non-binding section, I'm not sure that we would, there would be far enough where we would would not need to take those two separate actions. But combining the two into a binding section, we would likely be better off to have two separate actions, one for the transportation fund, separate for the the six-year tip. And we're doing that exact same thing this evening. So the approval of the six-year tip, a couple weeks ago, added a new project that was not included with the original formation of the Transportation Benefit District. So the ordinance tonight and the public hearing tonight amends the original TBD or transportation fund to create this new project, so we can use $20, $21 to fund that project. So there's a little bit of wonkiness there and I apologize for that, but that's 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 kind of where we're at. But the language, and I think the this language, I think, is almost what Hannah had had read earlier, I think, Hannah, if that's correct. At least the language in red there, and that could be readily adapted to be a shall rather than a where it has the intent into the section two. For what it's worth, my recommendation would be not to include that separate five percent caveat into that. That would be not necessary because we would do it in the six-year tip. Thank you.
Councilmember Stone?
So last point before I know President Knesset wants to call us to evoke is just the clarification that Director Johnston just provided, that these handrails, as they've been called, are with respect to the sales, right, tax, known as the transportation fund, and not tied to all funding sources under the under the tip or how those projects may be funded. So just as a point of clarification. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Before we call the vote, I'll chime in and just say, I agree with what Councilmember Hamel said. He has experience with this. The home fund was very, that was done at a time, too, and we didn't know what was going to happen. And when we renewed it and went well, we did the Transportation Benefit District during the recession and we got that done. I think keeping it as close as we can, putting it in a whereas is fine with me. Putting it putting it anywhere was fine, but I'm going to go ahead and vote not to put this into the final description. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion will say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No?
No.
No.
Motion fails two to four. Hey, thank you. Hannah, now, do we have any other motion? We need a motion to pass the resolution or does anybody else have any changes?
I'll move to approve as it's written.
Oh, I'm sorry, Michael, you blocked your whole face. All I saw was a hand. And there's no hair on your hand, so I couldn't tell who it was. Go ahead.
Well, let me second, before Dan gets a second, I would like to actually suggest that we simply adopt sort of this presentation, the staff's version, where it's the non-binding portion. Then I would still like to see some numbers in there. Maybe there's enough support for putting it in as recital, a non-binding recital. So I would make that motion, assuming there's no second yet for Dan's motion.
Is there a second? Okay, no second. So here we go. Go ahead, Michael.
So I'm going to go ahead and move that we add the recital as presented by Mr. Johnston.
Second.
Motion been made by Councilmember Lillquist, second by Councilwoman Anderson. Discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor will say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries six, zero, with one excused absence. Now.
Dan, you want to make the full motion now?
Oh, go ahead, Matt. You had your hand up.
Oh, no, I think Michael is right that the full motion would be would be for first.
Oh, Dan has, well, okay, go ahead and make that motion again.
I'll make the full motion.
Motion been made by Councilmember Hamel, second by Councilmember Anderson. Is any further discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor will say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries six, zero, one. Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Johnston?
Just very quickly, I just want to be clear that this is the language on my screen now that we will add to the resolution. And if that's the case, we will amend that resolution. Matt and I will do that this afternoon and then have that for council this evening.
Okay.
Seeing heads, we're good to go. Thank you.
Matt's got his hand up now.
Yeah, sorry.
Counselor Stamps, go ahead.
Thank you. So there's a there's a very similar whereas clause in the ordinance that's going to come forward tonight. And I think we would, for simplicity and clarity, we probably make the same change to that ordinance. So I can talk to Peter about the best way to to bring that forward tonight, whether we just present it by staff or if we would require the same kind of discussion we just had. But it's it's virtually the same whereas clause in the in the ordinance, they ought to be the same, I would say.
Okay, so just so I'm clear, Peter, the when I read the resolution tonight, I have to add the the proposed language that was just read, right?
That is correct. I would say both for that. And if there is a vote on the ordinance, there should be a similar reading into the record of that change and it's and we can provide a script to you for that purpose.
That would be good. Otherwise, I'm going to let you do it. So no, you write me a script, I'll do it. That's fine. Okay, is there anything else on this? Okay, thanks, Pete, for coming. See you all later. We now have to go to approval of minutes. We have our June 22 committee, the whole minutes.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion been made by Councilmember Hamel, second by Councilmember Anderson. Is any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor will say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Old or new business? Nothing? Oh, hey, Mr. Mayor, nice to see you. Why don't you chime in? I haven't heard from you at all today.
Hi there. This relates to, I could have brought this up tonight. This relates to a request from Congressman Larson. A $1.5 trillion investment act passed the House and it's going to the Senate now for roads, bridges, housing, broadband, clean energy, a whole bunch of good stuff. And he was hoping that the city council would support a letter from the city of Bellingham supporting this act as it moves onto the Senate so that we can hopefully get the attention of our senators and perhaps get this passed. So I, if council wants more information on this, I'm happy to prepare a summary, but it's I'm just asking for support from the council to authorize me to sign a letter indicating the city of Bellingham's support for this infrastructure bill in Congress. And as I said, if
Yeah. Councilmember Lillquist?
Yeah, it's something a really good idea. Seth, if you could just send us a link and tonight we can probably make that motion and I'll feel more comfortable having seen more about the the legislation.
Absolutely. Thank you. We'll send you some stuff via email.
Okay. Anything else under old or new business? Okay, seeing none. Meeting adjourned. We'll see you at seven o'clock. Oh, wait a minute. Counselor Raffado. Unmute yourself, sir.
Sorry, we have a we have executive session.
You know what? That that's my fault. I I fully that I'll, yeah, thank you for the reminder. I tried to get out of it, but it didn't.
You should have a, you should have an email from James Urban on that.
I've got it right in front of me.
Jean?
Yes.
Oh, there's this is Pinky. Sorry, I'm back. I do have two items for old or new business if we have a minute.
Yes, we do.
Okay, and I apologize if these have come up because I couldn't, I was out for a bit. Quick, there's a couple things. We had gotten a letter from Watcom County about talking about economic recovery. And they said they wanted to have a discussion with us. We sent a letter back saying yes, and I'm wondering if they we've heard anything back. I would, as as I've stated previously, I would certainly like to work on that with the county, and I'm wondering if we have any updates on that.
I have not heard a word since I sent that letter off to them, but I will, I'll get in touch with you as soon as I find out.
Okay. And then the other one was, a couple of weeks ago, we went through the process of doing all the zoning, et cetera, legalese, so that restaurants and businesses could actually expand out into the street. And a couple of restaurants had thought that they were going to be able to do that this weekend. And I went to Fairhaven in downtown and the only ones who had that open was The Black Sheep. And I talked to a couple of restaurants and they said they're waiting for the permitting process. And I'm wondering if Legal has any updates for us on these restaurants, et cetera, being able to open in the street? They do have a very small window for economic recovery and some of them cannot move forward until they can open out into the street. And I'm wondering if we have some updates on that.
Anybody? Go ahead, Matt.
Yeah, so I've been in touch with Darby in the planning department, and she's got those permits with her, I believe, at the moment. They were waiting on some very specifics, including some insurance and things like that. That's the last I heard of it, but there's nothing actively being reviewed in legal at this time, but I understand they're getting close to having that ready.
Okay, then there is a little confusion because I was told they were illegal.
Okay, I can, I'll follow up with Darby to see where that's at.
Yeah, if we could have an update tonight, that would be wonderful. Thank you so much.
Okay. Anything else? Well, we have executive session. We have two items. The first item is potential litigation claim number 2020 dash 20 for approximately 10 minutes and labor relations approximately five minutes, 15 minutes. I should be back here at quarter after three to adjourn the other meeting. Meeting adjourned.